Well, what did you say? What's not in the budget?
The stations, charter stations.
Okay, for, for what?
On what?
Gary?
You know Jimmy, I was always-
Do you like that building Jimmy?
Huh?
Do you like that building when you drove by it?
Oh, loved it, loved it, absolutely, that's a, that's a game changer, that's a, that's special, that into town. Not only good film, but it's a great job, yeah, brilliant.
Jimmy, in school I was always next to the teacher, is there something behind this?
Yes. Right here on my desk.
They need to go to Washington.
Is that Crystal?
Gary said he wasn't coming, I have a message from, uh, council.
Jimmy says he's gonna be just a little late, I think, but he's coming, uh, but I, I think, uh- Is that Crystal?
Yeah.
You got everything on here?
No.
Okay, it is five thirty, so we're, we're good to go. Go ahead and start this conference session for Wednesday, November tenth, at five thirty. Number one on the agenda is presentation on land bank, uh, Crystal Perry, land bank coordinator for the city of Huntington. Hi, Crystal.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good, how you doing?
Well, thank you.
We'll just go around so you can, we'll introduce everybody at the table, uh, Crystal, uh, down on that end, uh, Nat, our city clerk. And Wayne?
Wayne Moore, City Council.
Jerry Ruffel, City Council.
Jimmy Marino, the mayor.
Uh, Willie Jumpkins.
Vice Mayor.
The Vice Mayor.
Well, Crystal, if you can, uh, go ahead and, and begin and tell us about the, the land bank, uh, down in Huntington and, uh, what, what's, what's going on with it and how it's going?
Sure, now, this setup is a little new to me, so I'm gonna try to share my screen, I think that will, I think I'm gonna be able to do that. And... You let me know if you can...
Yep, if we can.
Okay, can you see, uh, what's on the screen now, the power recording?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, so, we just wanted, uh, number one, to thank you for letting us, uh, present this evening about, um, Huntington's land bank and, uh, what we're doing now, how we got here. We were the first land bank in the state of West Virginia, we know that, uh, six or seven other land banks, um, have come forward, uh, since then. But we wanted to give you a little background, uh, to let you see, um, like I said, what was going on in Huntington, why we chose, uh, this thing called a land bank. And so, some of you might know, that Huntington suffered a large population loss. Um, we went from a population of about eighty thousand people, down to at one point below fifty thousand. And so, a lot of the factories in Huntington that people worked at, they closed, and so we were this industrial city that had, uh, we found ourselves with all of these, uh, closed factories, a lot of people moved, so we had a population, um, loss, and job loss. And then we had some aging, uh, population that also had aging housing stock. And so, you can see, uh, this picture down here to the left, this was a common, um, scene in Huntington where you would have a block that would have more dilapidated houses than you would have livable houses. You would see closed factories, um, all over Huntington. And then you would have this scenario where you, um, oops, you would think that both of those homes there on the bottom was vacant, but actually, the home to the left was lived in, and it was by, um, a senior, uh, couple that just didn't have the means to clean the property up. Another thing that Huntington, um, had, and still has, is absentee owners or absentee landlords. As you can see, this property, uh, we outlined this property from two thousand to two thousand seventeen. This property had eight different owners. This property cycled through the tax sale so many times that we had trouble finding the owners. The city, um, historically used, um, block grant funds from our community development block grant federal fund to demolish these structures. And every year, the city would allocate about two hundred thousand dollars for demolition, that was testing, abatement, and demolition. And with federal funds, you have to get the approval from the state historic preservation. And this particular house did not get a, uh, approval from the state historic preservation. There was some type of historic significance that they felt that this house possessed either through the neighborhood, or, uh, the house being, you know, one of the small slender shotgun type houses. And so, at the time, the city didn't have a mechanism or other funding. It don't look like that anymore. Um, but we boarded it in two thousand nine, and it was still with these at home. And then you can see how it progressed. And in two thousand seventeen, that's when I became the demolition specialist for the city of Huntington, um, I went to the mayor and I said, "We've got to have some type of solution. This house has been there for seventeen years, we can't demolish it because we don't have the funds, um, to do what the state historic preservation wants us to do, and it's all we have." And so, for the first time since I had been with the city, uh, the mayor allocated, uh, a large amount of funds from the general fund to be used for demolition. And so, we had a project, um, called Project Batty, light and nuisance elimination. And we did about a one point two million dollar demolition blitz, um, in the city. And so, we were able to get these homes, uh, that had flipped in the tax sale and had sat there for years. But the absentee owners, again, um, they're just a huge burden on the city. The county and state tax sale, I'm not for sure, um, what it's like where you're at, but here in Huntington, here in Cabo County, it is a major contributor to slumming block. And we started following these properties, when we would demolish a property, we would go to the lien, and we would find out that, um, it was a different property owner. Um, and so, the properties were flipping faster in the tax sale than we could keep up with them. We had speculators from Georgia, uh, from Florida, and they would come into the city and they would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on buying these tax liens. And the only reason they wanted the tax lien was to collect the eighteen percent interest that follows that lien. Um, right now, the county tax sale have it- or any other mechanism that you can do right. And so, these speculators, uh, they know that the rate of return is high, and so they bid on properties that, um, they can rent to anyone, and then when our code enforcement officers, um-
I don't wanna tell her.
Currently, at the tax sales, if you have cash, you can buy properties. There's no type of checks and balance in these taxes. So, you can have the worst landlord in your neighborhood, and he can still buy properties, he or she can still buy properties at the tax sale. We have someone from the city of Huntington, we have multiple people, um, and they're from in different counties. I was in MacGowan County, uh- one of the same, uh, courts, um, in Huntington as they have in MacGowan County. This is their get out of jail free call. Because what happens is, a property owner has one of these houses, and it starts to fall into repair. And the city has to step in and we have to demolish this, and again, we file the lien on the property. They just thought came with taxes. And so, when that property sells, if that property sells, unless we have a land bank to go, uh, intercept that lien and to protect our interest, all of those liens associated with that property, so that's our municipal refuse, that's our testing, abatement, demolition, that is completely gone, once that property goes to the tax sale process. The lien follows the property and not the person. Um, and so, they know this, they know the ways around, um, getting out of this. And so, um, the city loses millions of dollars, and that's not an exaggeration, but we lose millions of dollars each year, um, to these taxes. Uh, and you can tell by looking at these pictures, um, this is what we have to deal with on a daily basis. Um, and these are probably not the worst of the worst. Um, the house there on the left was actually occupied. And so, uh, we had to, um, get some type of mechanism that we could get people out of these substandard houses. And so, we worked with, um, the, uh, the city mission, Coalition for the Homeless, Habitat, and Housing Authority. We developed a system to where we could actually get in place an emergency housing. And if you're using federal funds, you know that if you displace someone, you have to pay for that. That took that requirement out, but we still felt like that it was an obligation to help these people get in safe decent affordable housing. And so, we have actually helped five people, um, in the city of Huntington get in safe decent affordable housing, and, and getting them out of, of the, the house that they think that, that they have to live in. This is a, um, little infographic of how West Virginia county and state tax sales run. And so, when we had this infographic made, when I first looked at it, I said, "This is insane, it, it just, I can't, I can't decipher anything." And then I thought, "No, this is perfect, because this is really how the tax sale works." The red hole down at the bottom, we call that, um, tax sale purgatory. And those are where all of these properties, when a property doesn't get bid on or picked up at a county tax sale, uh, it goes to the state for a state tax sale. And if no one picks that property up, and they sort of mull around in purgatory. And the owners of these properties think that the state owns their property, because when their tax ticket comes, it has sold to state. And so, when we send them a violation, or we send them a notice that we're gonna to start proceedings to demolish your house, I'll always get involved, and they will say, "Oh, I don't own that anymore, the state owns it." And so, it's a complicated process that, um, even our legislators, who, who dabble in the tax sale, and they don't want to see this process changed, um, they don't understand. Even our, um, you know, sheriffs and county assessors and clerks, they don't understand it a lot of times. And so, it is this very archaic system that we are actually working with Russ Rollison and J.D. McCuskey, the state auditor, to change. And so, we're gonna have a lot of interesting, um, proposed changes to this tax sale system that will hopefully, um, be a benefit to, uh, the cities and, you know, small towns that are fighting, uh, this block problem. And so, in two thousand nine, you know, we're, we're, uh, we're talking about all of these problems that were happening. And we hear this thing called a land bank, and we hear it from this gentleman named Frank Alexander, and he is with the Centers for Community Progress. And I would urge, um, all of you to write that down and Google the Centers for Community Progress, and, uh, sign it for their emails, and, uh, really take a look and spend some time on their website, they have, uh, fantastic training and resources, um, and, uh, grants that can help you, um, with the problems that you're having. They really want to get into West Virginia, into the equal counties and communities, and so, I'm already established with them, I sit on the national, uh, one of their national boards, and, uh, so I would really encourage you to, uh, spend some time looking at their website. And so, um, we decided that we would contact them and tell them about what we were doing, and they encouraged us to start a land bank. And so, through the city's own rule, uh, authority, we started a land bank in two thousand nine. And our mission was very simple, we just wanted to return vacant, abandoned, and taxily equipped properties back into productive use. And so, we partnered with a local bank, and we got a very large line of credit, we got one point five million dollars. And so, we went to a tax sale with the message that we were going to ground the speculators and the bad people out of Huntington. And so, we started purchasing tax liens, and we started boarding up these properties that we would get title to. Uh, we sold some of the properties for redevelopment, as you can see the two photos, um, side by side. That was a property that the city actually had slated for demolition. And then the land bank actually purchased that at a tax sale, and we were able to sell that, excuse me, to a person that, um, was working on this block and had several other homes, and he rehapped this. And so, instead of that being just a, a vacant lot that no one was going to cut, now it's a productive lot. It's collecting taxes, it's collecting municipal refuse, so it's a win, uh, for the county and the city, and the neighborhood. Another thing the land bank was able to do, and we partnered with Habitat for Humanity. Habitat has purchased several pieces of property from the land bank, we've donated several pieces of property. Uh, but the best project I think that we've done to date was the Veteran Initiative. And as you can see in this, uh, upper right left hand corner, um, David Michael, who is the director of Habitat for Humanity, approached me about six years ago and said, "I wanna do a veterans community, and I want it to be tiny homes, and I need to find a place in the city to do this." And so, he found this, um, sort of tucked away small, uh, side street in Huntington, and this is where he wanted to do his veteran community. And so, the land bank started, uh, going to the tax sales, and anything that we would find on the street, we purchased. And today, this whole street is completely unrecognizable, and there's about nine tiny homes that house homeless veterans. Uh, and like I said, it has completely transformed this block. Uh, we were able to partner, um, with, um, AT&T, they put money through their Believe Appalachia initiative to help build one of the homes. There was block grant money, there was home funds, and so, this was a great project, uh, that we came in and we took a lot of area, and again, there's taxes being paid, there's revenue being brought in, um, another win-win situation. And, uh, this is another partnership that we had with, um, West Virginia State University. Um, community gardens are great, but they can go really bad really quick. So, I encourage you, if, uh, you ever have someone that says, "We need to just make community gardens on these vacant lots," um, you have to think about that really hard, they have to have capacity, there has to be someone there to manage those lots. Um, because in a season, they will become a weed lot, um, and, um, it is just too hard to maintain for your land bank. But this particular project, um, there was, um, a grant, uh, that the university received, and, uh, they kind of adopted, uh, several, a couple of our land bank lots, and they turned them into community gardens. And, uh, they were directly behind our community center, and so, at the evenings, when the kids got out of school, um, the vista workers would take them to the garden, and they would actually work and, and learn how to manage a garden, learn how to grow vegetables. And then, they, uh, took that a step further and developed a business plan, a logo, um, and, uh, produce, peddlers was born, as you can see up in the top left. And the kids received another grant to purchase bicycles, so they could, uh, pedal their produce throughout the neighborhood. So, they could actually sell the product, um, and it would allow them to learn financial management. Uh, like I said, they, they developed the business plan, the logo, and everything, so this was a complete success. This is what a community garden should be. And then, we wanted to reduce the appearance of life. So, how could we take these properties that were on the verge of demolition, but not a priority? And so, the bottom left, you can see that that is a, uh, that was a brick, um, building that we had, that had been slated for demolition, but it wasn't a priority. But it was in the heart of the community, and the kids walked by it every day, and so, on Martin Luther King Day, we decided to do, uh, an event, and the house was already boarded, and so, we had plywood measured and cut for the windows. And the kids from the community center, um, that worked on the garden, they were able to paint sort of the windows, uh, for this building. And we called this our dream house, and the kids were able to write their dreams on the door, um, and again, uh, painted the, uh, the boards for, uh, Martin Luther King Day. And, um, after we finished this project, I thought, "In about a week, it'll be vandalized, and we'll have to go remove the boards." Um, the very next day, I was inundated with calls from the public, talking about how they'd love to drive by and see the house. Uh, the property was eventually sold, and a new, brand new building was built, um, in its place. But from the time those boards were put on the property until it was demoed, there wasn't one piece of graffiti on those boards. And so, the community really embraced that, um, and made sure that that stayed exactly like it was from the time that it was set up there. And so, the next thing that I would encourage you to do, if you're, if, if, um, you know, if you're having trouble with vacant abandoned properties, a land bank may not be for everybody, and so, what I always encourage everyone to do is open up your toolbox, see what tools that you have. Huntington, um, we have actually had to build, uh, I tell people, we've had to build a garage. We have every tool that I think you can possibly have. Is every tool working the way it should? Maybe, but we have, and so, it's important for you to take inventory, because what happens is, there's some of us, you know, we've been here sixteen years, fifteen, twenty years, and we forget about things, or we say, "Well, we, we don't use it." And nobody asks why we don't use it. So, what we did in nineteen, we looked at our toolbox. We found that we needed our, we have our building inspectors, that is a tool. We have the best building inspectors, um, around, our building inspectors are fantastic. We have code enforcement, we work with the health department, again, we work with Habitat for Humanity, the Housing Authority, City Mission. All of those are tools that can be in your toolbox. Um, mapping, uh, GIS is a valuable resource. When you have a map, when you have an area, um, that you are working in, that map is gonna tell your story, it's gonna show you exactly where you need to start. And we just did a project called Project Shine, and we worked in, uh, the Highland area of Huntington. Uh, it's an area that has Marshall University, St. Mary's Hospital, it's walkable, there's a grocery store, um, it, it's got every convenience that, that they have, and it is one of those communities that has, is just teetering back and forth, it's slipping down. And so, we decided to do a rehabilitation, uh, project there. And we had to map, the first thing we had to do is we had to see, um, how many properties were under occupation. And so, when we mapped that, immediately we could see the area that we needed to focus in. So, GIS is a great tool, and I would encourage you, uh, if you have, if you have someone, um, on board that has those skills, use that person all the time, because that's gonna be your greatest asset. We also have an unsafe building commission, that is the, uh, board that decides if these properties are gonna be, um, demolished. And so, we've made a lot of changes, um, we've reviewed some of our processes, some of our, uh, legal services that we have to do. Uh, but we run a tight ship on this board, the board meets every month. And we want to give everyone the opportunity to fix up these houses, um, we would much rather see a house rehabilitated than demolished. But we also know that we have people that will, um, use that as a crutch and extend that process, and so, we put everyone on a strict six month, uh, period. And if they are working and they are progressing on these properties, we, we can extend that. But, uh, if you come to our unsafe building commission, you better have a plan, because, uh, they're not afraid to, um, order these properties demolished. Um, one of the things we say is, uh, "We expect people to come to our city, we have to come to that." And so, that's kind of the phase that we're in now, we're cleaning house, uh, we're actively talking about what's next. And so, what we want to do is, is we have our tools, and again, land bank is a tool that you will use, uh, for slumming blocks. Land bank is not going to solve your problem. Um, in the state of West Virginia right now, there is no dedicated funding for your land banks. And so, your land bank in, in the state of West Virginia, it doesn't function like a lot of the land banks in the country. And so, what we have to remember is, the properties that we're getting at the land banks, we're sometimes selling those at a loss. The majority of the time we are. Sometimes we donate those properties, um, but if your land bank is used, um, um, any other way, uh, right now, it's gonna have a hard time being successful. And so, um, when you create a board, education, uh, that board is huge. Uh, we've had a few board members, uh, that, uh, have created some hardship, and, and we've had to start over, and, uh, but you just learn as you go, but I can't stress enough that, uh, land bank is a tool. Um, and in the state of West Virginia, we are a strong property rights state, as we should be, we don't want to take away people. But we also, um, have the motto of fix it up, pay it up, and give it up. So, fix up what you have, pay up what you own. And if you can't do those two things, then you need to donate that property to an entity that can, and that's where your land bank comes in. And we work with property owners every day, um- And we work with property owners every day to take donation of your property. You have to be careful, though, that your land bank does not become a depository. So they're going to be concerned that you say, "No, we can't accept that property." And you have to be tolerant with that. And you have to know areas that you want to work in. Because you will become a depository. And we've seen that. We have, and right now, we have way too many properties. We have a hundred and ten vacant lots. And so that's just way too many vacant lots. So we are going to dispose of those lots in this coming year, whether we have to donate them, give them away, whatever. But we need to get those properties out of our bank. And again, that was trial and error. You're going to make mistakes, and your land bank is going to be tested to your, your land bank is not going to be like Huntington. If you have five properties in your land bank, that's a successful land bank to you. So one size doesn't fit all in this. So these are just some of the things that we've been able to do. And the last thing, we're big on quotes here. We like to leave you with a quote. "But there are risks and costs to action, but they are far less than the long-range risk of comfortable energy." And I think we can all say here in Huntington that for a long time, we didn't take any action. And so we have found ourselves with a large number of houses that have to be demolished. And there is no going back on these. And so as leaders, we have to be willing to make people a little uncomfortable. And demolition is always a problem. When you're going into, you know, these areas and these neighborhoods, and, you know, we almost demolished a whole lot in one area. We demolished fourteen houses. And so that's uncomfortable. But you have to be willing to do that for the sake of your cities and your towns and your citizens. And change is hard, but it is necessary. It was very necessary for Huntington to, and for the mayor, to recognize that demolition had to be a priority. And the one thing, I think I say this every single day, is no good deed, no sin punished. No matter how many times that you get that, the worst house off of the best lot, somebody is going to complain. And then the last thing that we want to leave you with is to go forth and educate. Educate your citizens. Educate them on your plan with slumming lots. And talk to your community leaders, your elected officials. They're going to be what grows our land bank. So we need state legislation. We have enacted legislation to establish slumming lots. We have right of first refusal. And I could talk for hours about that. But we need, we need a funding source. And we need to change in our county tax bill, because it is contributing to slumming laws in our counties. But the big thing that, and this is what I hope that I'm doing tonight, is just educating. Educating you on tools that are out there, that you can, you can come back slumming laws. If not with a land bank, but with code enforcement, or building inspections, or vacant property matches. So there's tools out there, but we just want to make sure that everyone is educated and has all the tools that they need at their disposal. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Crystal, I had a question. This is Wayne Worth. I really, I just want to thank you first for speaking to us and educating us about this. We've kind of been talking about this a little bit. You know, we know a little bit about it, but maybe we're not like the experts on it. But my question is, you know, I understand that land banking is a tool. It's a good tool to sort of chase off those speculators you were talking about, coming in from out of state or from LLCs or whatever, they're buying up properties just to get to eighteen percent on the lien. And we see, we see some of that in Clarksburg. My question is, you know, when, you know, when you guys acquire these properties on these tax sales, I mean, we know that most of the time, you're going to lose money on it. But, but say if you donated some of these properties, you know, to the, to probably the property owner next door, is, or whoever it may be, do you guys have like stipulations on like how that property should be redeveloped? That way, we're not, we're not just giving, donating properties away to folks who are going to be slum lords and just, you know, create more blight in the community?
Yeah, so we did. This is kind of a two-fold question. I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far off or too confused. So the land banks now have right of first refusal, which means that if you have a land bank, you can go to the sheriff's office before the sale and get a listing of those properties that you, that are liable for taxes. And we just, I think we just got an extension on the right of first refusal last year, year before. I'm not for sure it sunsetted yet, but we have the ability to have right of first refusal being before the public on properties that are assessed at fifty thousand and below, that have been condemned by the city, that have cycled through two taxes. And there might be another caveat in there. But we can actually grab those properties first. One of the stipulations that comes with right of first refusal is that we have to, within so many days of acquiring the deed, so it has to go through the whole eighteen months, we have to contact those site property owners and give them the option of purchase first. And I have reservations about that, just like you. And so Huntington has never participated in right of first refusal. We actually have since the tax sale two thousand, since two thousand seventeen. We just don't have the funds to do that right now. And so we're reorganizing. And that's one of the things, though, that we did before right of first refusal came. When we had a proposal, when someone would propose to purchase a property, we looked at their background, and what I mean by background is, are they paid up to the city? Are they on point with their municipal records? If they are a, you know, what other properties do they, what does their properties look like? So you definitely can put those stipulations on to a property owner. And I was just, I've just been with Jay Dean in the past today, and I'm feeling his earful of what he needs to change with this, of what he needs to propose to change with this tax sale. And that was one of the things that I brought about, was that the language in that right of first refusal is, it needs to be changed. Because we don't need to be giving properties to people that are not good stewards of what they have in person.
I got a question. Crystal, might as well. I was curious about the unsafe building commission. Can you tell me about that? How many members does it have? Are there requirements to be a part of the board?
Sure. There is. We have to have the fire marshal, someone from the fire department, someone from our police department, someone from the health department, our electrical, plumbing, a chief building inspector, and we have a community liaison. So I think we have seven people on that building commission. And, you know, that comes through, we got a lot of flexibility. Some of the, the rules were changed on that through. I'm not mistaken, I think that's the building code where we've adopted all parts of that. And that is, that is sort of out of my territory a little bit. But it allows us to, because of those professionals that are on that board, it allows them to determine if a property is handed up for demolition. And, you know, we have to go through the legal process of notifying the property owners. We just changed that step about three months ago. It actually slowed down our process quite a bit. But now, anyone that is out of state, anyone that owns property, a corporation that's out of state, or a private individual out of state, we have to serve them through the secretary of state. And so that slowed us down a little bit, because we do have a lot of out-of-state property owners in Huntington. And so we have one gentleman from Kentucky that signed the green card, so we know he got it. But we were getting ready to demolish his home, and he said that he didn't have property. And so it causes to report that. Whether I agree with it or not, that's what they're doing. And so everyone is certified, personal service, certified mail publication. Like I said, if they are out of state, we go through the Secretary of State. And they meet each month, and we provide pictures of the properties. And so the, everyone on the board goes out, they do a sidewalk usual of the home. And then the property owners come in, and like I said, they have to have a very good, clean, and concise plan for rehabilitation. The board no longer lets these properties sit for years and years and years. And we cleaned up, we cleaned up their process, and we cleaned up their demolition list. When I started, there was supposed to four hundred properties, and now we have less than eighty on our list.
I had a question. You've mentioned Habitat for Humanity several times. We don't have one in our area. How difficult would it have been for you without having that tool?
Habitat and Housing Authority, I have to say, they have been our two major partners. We have, we have had a lot, we've not had very much success with, you know, private individuals, private companies coming in and wanting to build new. I think we had nine building, new builds in the city of Huntington last year, and eight of those were in attack. So people aren't wanting, they're not wanting to build in the city, and we need to know why. And a lot of that is because there's not, there's no property to build on. And so that's one of the things that the land bank can do, is we have the ability to try to mass, to gather properties, so that we can come up with contiguous properties, buildable lots. There's a lot of people that want to flip properties in Huntington and rent properties in Huntington, but we just, we have too much of that now. So we want to be strategic with our planning. And again, I go back to that GIS mapping, is we know where we want to work for the next couple of years. And so we lay that footprint out, and we're going to try to get some properties. We're going to try to reach out to some of the property owners that have these vacant abandoned houses or lots and offer them, you know, just if you'll give it to the city, we'll pay all of the, the land bank will pay all of the fees. And then finally, we will find ourselves with some buildable lots. And hopefully, that will be able to get some of these private developers to come and do some things.
Thank you.
Yes, Crystal, I have a question. I think I'm having a hard time envisioning, when you say "we" with the land bank, land bank program, what entity in the city and who, how is that structured itself? Like, who actually is making decisions about properties that are purchased, those types of things?
Yeah, so the, when we first started the land bank, it was housed under our Urban Renewal Authority. And so all of the property proposals, all of the land bank business was conducted by the Urban Renewal Authority. Once we had enabling legislation to create a land bank, because we were working off of rural authority, once we were able to form a land bank, it became the city's land bank. And now we actually have a board. There's seven members, and it still functions the same way. Every property proposal, all the decisions, I bring before that board. And so I don't make any decisions on my own. Everything is presented to that board.
So you, you, what, what was your actual title within the city again?
So I am the city's demolition specialist. But I wear multiple hats. So I'm housed out of our development department. And so I was working with the Urban Renewal Authority when they were exploring this land bank idea. And they said, "Hey, can you pick a spreadsheet on these properties?" And to be completely honest and transparent, I started studying about, you know, what's a land bank and how does it work. I asked if I could go to some conferences. And so when I really got to digging in and learning more, they just really honestly started giving me orders to do. But I am, I'm not a director. I don't have a title. There's no one that gets paid now. We used to have, I was paid fifty percent through the land bank, and we had a property maintenance firm that was paid fifty percent. But like I said, there's no dedicated funding for, for land banks. And so it's something that, again, it's just the city's land bank, and there's a board. And part of the time now is to manage that board.
Ken, I want to ask a question. You talked about working on some new legislation. This legislation, would it be statewide if it's adopted? And secondly, would it, I lost my train of thought, but it would be, it would be a statewide thing? And how far along are you? When, when would you propose to have this new legislation implemented?
So it would be statewide, and we are trying to, actually, we're supposed to have the first draft of a bill tomorrow to look at. So they're going to present it for this session.
For this session?
For this session. It's going to be a big bill, chock full of everything. But this tax sale has, has got to be.
Do you have a municipal league behind you on this?
We do. We have, I've worked with a municipal league from the start. And so they're completely, actually, I, I think, once a month, I'm on, I'm on the abandoned properties coalition. And that's managed through the hub in Charleston, the Development Hub. I'm a founding member of that. We started in two thousand twelve. And that is a coalition comprised of people throughout the state that we're all working towards a solution for vacant abandoned properties. And so the municipal league has been with us from the beginning. And so I meet regularly with the municipal league on calls each month. And so they're, they're very familiar with what we're doing and behind us.
I have a question. Do you mind? Does Huntington have, this is in that right, I'm over here in the corner. Does Huntington have a code appeals board?
Meaning, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that term.
I'm wondering how it compares to your unsafe building commission, because we have a code appeals board, and it's made up of individuals with certain certifications. And they have the right to determine whether or not the property can be rehabbed or if it has to be demolished. So could that board not work for this?
I think so. It's probably just a different name. It sounds, that's what it sounds like to me.
I have one more follow-up question, Crystal. Have you found much success in, say, private developers acquiring or buying properties or even just having properties donated from the land bank to flip into, you know, residential again? And, and good success with that, not just, you know, folks that are just, you know, flipping houses just to, just to be slum lords again, but maybe, you know, redeveloping houses into some nice apartments or single-family dwellings? Have you had good experience with that, with your land banks?
We have. When we first, when we first started out in the land bank, like I said, we had, you know, to be completely transparent, we started out way too good. And so we were not afraid to say, "We were getting kicked. We made mistakes." But we know that this tool is something that Huntington needs. And so we're fighting for it, and we're, we're learning something every day. But we have had great developers that has, that have worked with us. And they rehab these homes for single family and for rental. A lot of them are, the majority they want it to be. to be a rental property. And again, we just have so much rental mechanics and the majority of those are not well kept. So the board is very particular, they have someone that wants to purchase a property. They do a lot of check, checks on the people who want to purchase and so that's, it's a good thing that we can do that and the board has the right to reject any proposals. And so we either accept a proposal or they counter an offer or we reject, they have rejected many of the proposals. And we have a home right now that code enforcement alerted me to that they had to remove a dozen squatters. This property sits adjacent to Huntington's new soccer field, it was on a great little street in, in an area that we had worked with Project Shine. We found the property owner, she was in North Carolina and she had moved away to take care of her sister that was turning legal and she had just left the property and it was delinquent for taxes, it had back municipal refuse and it was actually going to be auctioned in the county auction a couple weeks ago. And so I made contact with her and I asked her if she would consider donating that property to the land bank and the land bank would take care of all the costs and we would pay the back taxes on it. And she agreed and so that property transfer went through and this property is very much salvage. We're going to have to go in there, we're going to have to claim what the squatters left and things like that, but what we plan to do with this property is to have an open house and we want to have contractors come in, we want to have, you know, what if a teacher in the area wanted to buy the first home? We want to have all of our resources there, we have first time home buyers, we have federal agencies that assign to help first time home buyers in the city. So we want to have all of those resources there, we want everyone to come and look at that place and then we'll take proposals and we want to be sensitive to what that neighborhood wants. Huntington has a lot of rehab houses and so a lot of those are not regulated and I've already had three of those people who run those facilities call and want, you know, want information about this house and I know that that is not what the neighborhood wants there. And so, you know, when we take proposals, the board can look at this and they can decide what would be the better use that you know of this property and I'm hoping, I'm not a voting member, but I'm hoping that it will be a single family home and there's, you know, someone can live there for years and years. And so that's just some of the things that, you know, the good, you know, the good stories that we can do and so that's what we're going to try to do this year, we're going to try to, you know, look at our inventory and see where we have properties that we can donate to people that want to increase their side yard or, you know, what have you, but, you know, I'm excited about this property to see where it goes. And, and this is a property that will have a clear, clear title to it and so while we, while we don't want to say, you know, ninety thousand dollars, you know, we always start with tell us what you think the property's worth, but we know that we'll probably make a small profit on this home. So that, that's one of the good things that, that, you know, we've got in our future.
So what, what was the reason that you moved away from the U R A?
I think it was just because that the, we had the ability through, of course, state law that the land banks could be enacted and we just felt like it was cleaner because we were, we would be a municipal land bank and the city could, it was just that, it wasn't, I don't think there was any reason other than the, the board makeup that was the requirement for the land bank is, it's similar to the U R A, but I think they just wanted it separate. But it can completely run out of the U R A, it's very, very similar. The only thing that, the, the board makeup, like I said, is a little different, so we would have to, we would have had to have gone out of the U R A and into a different meeting for the L R A because of the, the makeup of the board, but the only thing, only major difference was the power of eminent domain and the U R A has that, that a land bank does not. And I would never see a reason for the land bank to have, there wouldn't be any reason why they would have that kind of power.
Any, any other questions? Well, Crystal, thank you, that was very good, a lot of information there to absorb and we certainly appreciate your time and explaining everything and I think you did a great job for us.
Complicated process and I know that a lot of you are probably thinking, I don't get this, I don't think this will work. And so anytime that you want to come and visit, we would be more than glad to host you and we can, we can take you around Huntington and show you some of our projects and that puts things into perspective a little bit better when you can get boots on the ground and you can, you can kind of see what's going on. But we're always open to assist in anything you need, please let us know, we'll be glad to do it. Like I said, we're better together and I think we all have the common goal, we want West Virginia to prosper and so we, we never shy away from other communities with any problem that they're having. So feel free to give us a call, we, we will help you in whatever way.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
You are so welcome.
Okay, that was a lot of information there.
Yes.
Very good. It's, we kind of started on, on land banking somewhat with the, the U R A where you went to the tax sale and kind of, yeah, we just don't formally have a land bank board and so forth. Some of those things intertwine, it's like Nat pointed out with the B Z A, the board that we currently have that has an architect and all these different components to, similar to what she's saying, just kind of different names, so we kind of have some of this going, but not formally gone with, I'd be correct?
That's correct, yeah. So we have the Urban Renewal Authority, the Urban Renewal Authority with the action we took last, the last month now, February, November, that has a land banking component to it, but I mean, this would be a different avenue, we'll exactly do it right now, but it would be something that would complement.
Yeah, I really like the idea of the unsafe building commission, the zoning appeals board, the building commission, we're having a hard time filling spots on that, I mean, we've, we've been trying since I've been here, filling spots and we can't, you know, if we go with an unsafe building commission, have the fire marshals, the police department, the health department, a community liaison, maybe council member, making those decisions for demolition, takes, takes the hands out of the, the engineer, said engineer making that decision, now we have the commission making that decision that we can meet and discuss and I really like that idea that, that, you know, I'm going to look and see if I'm bringing that here.
Good, good, it had a lot of good components, like I said, we're touching on several of them, but to incorporate it all in one, I think would be a good idea to, to do that. So is that something you, you think that would be doable and something we should look into?
I, I think it will be.
I guess what I'm thinking is.
I want to take their information and see.
Is when she says that they're going to have an open house, like who's doing?
I think it's, you know, it'll be like John Whitmore, myself, you know, Ashley Carr, maybe Director of Finance, I, I think probably those people, I would imagine.
Having a position like her dedicated to that is huge, we've really seen all the angles of it.
It sounds like, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful thing for a city, it just sounds kind of complicated in the way that it's implemented, you know, if you're, if you're, you're basically wearing two hats, whatever your job is within the city now, basically you have another job that's, you know, it could get pretty cumbersome with all of the properties that we have. So I don't know how, you know, we'd get around, maybe not hiring someone, but it would have to be someone who really knew what they were doing.
She said she wore different hats, she said that she's a demolition expert or whatever that is, but.
Well, I think through the city, she's probably paid as the demolition, that's her clear title. I think they throw her in there to do the land banks, because I think she said it a couple of times, that there's just no funding, you know, to, you know, for land banks and I think that also means, you know, probably personnel wise too. So maybe that, although land bank's probably a priority in Huntington, they just didn't really allocate the funding to say, okay, you're just going to specifically do land banks, we're going to have you as your demolition coordinator, but you're going to do this too.
They actually paid her right out of that, of that money, she said originally that was paid fifty percent of her salary, paid right out of that.
Right.
And I mean, they, they haven't made, bought a property since two thousand seventeen.
Exactly, yeah, and I think the reason why is because she said that they became like a depository for properties and now they have like a hundred and fifteen properties and they probably just said, whoa, let's hold back a little bit.
We're not doing anything with these.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try to at least get these, get these donated or sold, you know, through, I guess through their unsafe building commission, you know, that makes those decisions. I mean, of course, we don't really have a land bank, well, I mean, we, we have something similar, I think.
She said there was actually a land bank board.
Right.
And then the unsafe building commission just determines whether or not.
Right, she did say that.
So the land bank board would be making the decisions upon.
Right.
If they're purchasing, that's what I'm saying, I'm having trouble with.
Where here, it would be the U R A board making the decisions.
And I think she said the only reason why they transitioned it to, from the U R A board to the land bank board, although she said it were much of the same, was because they didn't really see it being applicable to the U R A board because the U R A has eminent domain powers unlike the land bank board and so they wanted to sort of separate that. I mean, I think, you know, at the end of the day, if we do decide to do this, we, we probably, you know, should, we probably should get our attorney to kind of look into it, the legalities of it, you know, because I guess state code changes all the time, you know, you know, first they, when they started a land bank in Huntington, it was through the, the home rule, now there's legislation as cities can, you know, run that themselves through a, you know, through a external board, you know, to do that, so this kind of checking up and following up with that may be advantageous for us in the future.
Do you think in that legislation, they're, they're looking at possibly a funding mechanism from the state to, to give money to afford the land banking?
I, I would imagine, she said there was a lot in that legislation, I mean, we just have to look at it.
Yeah.
But I think that the meat and potatoes of it is, is, is trying to restructure the county state tax sale, because that apparently is, you know, it's, it's really causing a lot of havoc on a lot of municipalities across the state, especially when you have these speculators come in and they're, they just buy property just, just to buy it, you know, and sit on it for, sit on it and collect their eighteen percent, whatever she was saying.
What our county has over restructuring, counties though, has.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a good question.
Like if there's any type of, like if they can restructure it themselves.
Right, or have a board that says, hey, if you're going to come in here and buy a property and you're an absentee owner, we want to know what you're going to do with this property, what's your plan and here's our criteria.
I mean, maybe that's some type of way around the state.
It could be, but maybe there's, maybe there's state law that's enabled.
I'm saying the state law obviously, you know, supersedes whatever county's deciding to do, but there has to be some benefit.
Right.
For it to be structured the way it is now on a county and state level, I would say.
Well, Ken, you've been working the tax office at the county, so you might be able to pull that through.
I don't think there was a benefit before, there were just not so many properties.
Where?
Like even when I started twenty five years ago, there weren't, there were a handful of properties in the city of Clarksville that would go up for sale, especially newer occupied homes or homes where people just vacated. So it's just, I guess.
It does seem like a fly-in after the last.
It has.
Ten, fifteen years.
And then we do have more investors coming in, they started like in the late nineties, early two thousands, just bigger companies coming in from other states to buy things up and earn the interest, but those tax sales laws have not changed in years, so it's exciting that they're looking up at that.
And it's probably just.
The county does not have any, county has no control, we have to go by those there.
And that's what they're trying to do, I think, is just trying to ratchet that down to where, you know, a big company or LLC or whoever, you know, can't just come in and just leave a, buy a property, leave it vacant and collect the interest in it while the municipalities, you know, are watching it crumble and have to maintain it, you know, yeah, that's, that's what I think they're trying to do with this, they're trying to give the counties maybe a little more authority to say, you know, hey, if you're going to buy these properties, you know, you, you got, at these estate sales or tax sales, you got to have a plan, so.
Well, it's a complete turn of the buck going on in the city.
Yes.
Is this interest that they're collecting, is that the amount of some significant monies?
It can, it's what more the banks are paying right now.
It's the eight percent per month, what, it's a one percent per month over eighteen months.
On the amount of taxes that they pay, they have to pay two years of taxes when they purchase it, so some of them could be a couple thousand dollars when they pay in taxes, so one percent on that per month.
Okay, so I didn't have a board.
They buy a hundred properties, drives up.
I don't, we don't, not having a Habitat for Humanity, she said that was probably the one, that was one of the two biggest helps, you know, when she got that started and we don't have one.
What happened to our Habitat, we, we did have one, I know they built a couple houses, I, I remember, but it's been years ago.
They did, but privately, yes, they, they do recognize, they don't have one, they recognize that it's a, so they're sure of, hopefully it's one on here in the near future, but they do recognize it is.
Okay, because I knew we did have one years ago and they got to build a couple properties.
Central Building, we did, by Jackson Avenue Square, Jackson Avenue, is that where it was?
What was it?
Jackson Avenue.
One, that was one, there was one on, I don't know, probably over there.
Oh, there's several homes that they've built around.
No, I know, but that's.
The actual Habitat.
All, all over, sir. Well, any other, we're, we're going to kind of look into this area.
Yeah, I want to look into that, that question that they have and see if we can do that here, what we need to do, we'll present to you guys for consideration.
We'd also have to form a land bank.
Yeah.
So we have the U R A.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't, maybe, you know, John might correct me from wrong, but now we're starting to utilize some of the powers of the U R A, it's in its infancy that we're doing such as the land bank, you live, purchase these properties, I think if it starts to grow and expand, maybe take it to the next level, form a land bank and do that route, but let's, let's get our feet wet with what we're doing and if it grows bigger, make it bigger.
I, I would have liked to have asked her, what, what were the qualifications for the people on that board?
I'm sure I'll, I'll get that one.
Yeah, those, like the other one you had.
That's the fire marshal, the police.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the land bank.
Oh, okay.
Like if they actually had, you know, certain.
I'm sure you can set it to whatever you want it to be.
But do you?
Right, because I mean, you know, you learn a lot, I've already learned a lot just being at two meetings, but, you know, you don't want everyone in there, obviously, I'm sitting, John knows what he's talking about when it comes to, you know, what he's advising us on, but I'm completely ignorant, have no idea.
Right.
Yeah, none of us there really know, so it would be nice to have, because I'm a amazing.
Some expert.
Attorney.
Would, would the unsafe building commission replace our code appeals board?
I don't know, that's something that we'll get to.
Replace the one.
The code appeals board?
Because that's the same function as what the code appeals.
I mean, so that's going to go with, stay our, our.
A little research over there, yeah, that'd be great, can't get anybody doing that.
Yeah, if we just rename and keep that, those people.
And add to it.
Add more, because like everything, finding people to support them for.
This is the word, so, I'm sorry, the word of zoning deals, when they have, for example, we have the, if we had an unsafe building commission, say somebody's house is vacant and your house, if your house is vacant, you'd go in front of the zoning deal, correct?
Code, code, yeah.
Would the unsafe building commission be able to go out and find homes, and, you know, like go to that? Would the unsafe building commission be able to go out and find the homes, and, and you know, like go that extra step to find the homes? As we know, for example, property over in Washington, I would do four, two thirty-five, whatever it is, it's right below W I, which seems to be an issue. Is that something that, I mean, they could go out and do, not like the appeals board? They would say, look, this room is unsafe, you know, let's, we gotta act on this move, but they would think the ultimate person is something, well, this needs to be demoed or break out, I mean, is it?
I think from the signs with the code enforcement board is the property.
To, to board. They're not actually going out and finding the property, but, yeah. They're just an agent like, uh, uh, you know, we still have the code, uh, code officials going insane appropriate. They bring it to these people to say if it is or not, now they, they.
It sounded like her description of the unsafe building commission, how they have the authority to send those stuff to companies to call.
They do.
They, they're the ones.
The appeals board doesn't, is that?
Our code appeals board does, yeah, yeah. Yeah, like if you have a plan to rehab your house, you have to present it to code. And then they have to present it to the code appeals board because it's already been condemned. So they had to determine where the noise comes off that condemned code.
It sounds like they're gonna have to play around with the people to find it all the time.
Yeah, I, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, I think that was very productive, good, good, getting that, my impact. Uh, economic development update, uh, John, if you can give a little update to us?
Yeah, uh, quite a few things happening. I had an opportunity to speak with David Manley with, with County Industrial Development Authority regarding evolution with the bill. He is very excited that this would be expanded, um, and would be available to actually speak to the coun- uh, council. In particular, they, their most recent iteration was the two thousand and eighteen. They had four businesses that were developed from that incubator project. All four businesses are still operating today, including both, two of those were restaurants, I think one was a brew hub, so they weathered COVID, which, that's amazing, especially, one of the things he really put into it though was that they were able to do that because they also provided entrepreneurial assistance, a lot of those types of programs, not just giving money to businesses. So I'm gonna be continuing to talk with him, perhaps, perhaps we could bring him in just to discuss their wins and many critiques that he would have overall. But, yeah, I mean, it, it looked really exciting, especially with the information the council's already presented, so we're, I'm gonna keep on that. Let's see, next, uh, the, there was, when I first got here, we were discussing a business based listing service on our website. Demand has not been there, I've only received, I believe, two listings since. We do provide listings for commercial listing services and things like that, but, um, as it is right now, I do not feel comfortable just putting two vis- two spaces up it's not necessarily going to drive that much, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Continue evaluating this, but it, it does seem to be a challenge. Top plan, they are E, Environmental Planning and Design of Pittsburgh. They, uh, well, they are beginning their work, actually on our Facebook page, uh, posted up the, um, just the simple get information here, some, a simple survey, just to get some general ideas. They're going to be at Winterfest, um, then they're also going to have three additional events in two thousand and twenty-two to get citizen participation. Then we will have Carolyn Jaeger with E P D at the December eighth planning commission to discuss the overall project plan. So that's, that's moving along splendidly. Let's see, website updates, we are moving ahead with those, Civic Plus, we have the template all approved, so we should be having a rollout within the next month. It's a lot of blues, I'll put it like that, um, that was the, the color palette that they, in working with them and looking with our, I guess our current branding, that they felt that would work. So if there's any problems that develop when we continue this process with Civic Plus, we will, we'll be able to change those. But it's moving along pretty well. Finally, I just had some business news, we were able to get in contact with Calvin Lee, he's the owner of the Kroger site on Pike Street. He is very excited about the, um, city being involved with economic development, so I'm hopeful we'll be able to have a good conversation cause he is looking at having tenants multiple utilize that space. Naturally, they would have to come in through building permits and site plan, I don't know if we'd require a site plan review, but it's going to be an undertaking converting that from a grocery store to a multi-tenant structure. Finally, then today we had two businesses, um, at East Point, um, one of them is from Morgantown area, Asian Royal Market, and then one from Parkersburg, To- Tokyo, so two businesses in East Point. We have the, I, I buried the lead last time, Longhorn is going to be at the, um, oh shoot, Eaton Park location, so.
It's a done deal?
Well, I'll put it like this, when, we had the technical review meeting over here, so it was public, and they said, yes, you can tell people that it's going to come. Now, I wanted to push, one, are we getting cheddars? So they, they're going to, uh, look to see how Olive Garden works out first for, but I mean, that, that would be two thirds of one.
That fair, where the fairland location would be an ideal spot for something.
And, and that's, that was why I was like, we're running out of space up there, that's a good problem, but they really need to figure out if they want to, cause someone else, another co- um, chain may come in. So, and, so we're, we're working with them, they're going to be developing, dropping off plans, and there's a few other, I guess, odds and ends that we're going to be working on, planning commission stuff going in the December meeting for some zoning tax amendments. Other than that, that's, uh, that's, that's the nuts and bolts.
Now, they do, uh, what'd you say, one Asian?
So Asia Royal Market and Tokyo, it's a restaurant.
Now, where, where are they going, is it, or they're just looking?
No, they, they, they actually had their, um, city licenses approved, I received the, I get the email for this.
What location is that?
Um, shoot, near the, I believe they're, when I typed in the address, it was near the, the newer structure, so like with Burger I M. That general location.
Both of those are.
Yes. So that, that section of the, um, shopping center is filling up relatively quickly, that was back to back today.
Is there something that link in, I know you were just talking about the, the commercial property on the website, and I brought this up in one of your personal meetings. Can, is it possible just to run like an M L S B onto the city website? I mean, it seems like that would be something easy and if people were looking for not just commercial property, but residential property, they could just, you know, think large marketing, they, come look at our website, that all this property could be there.
I, I'll look into it, that, the, uh, the issue.
If you filter it out towards just like city limits, if that's, you know, if that's possible, that you can see every property that's for sale, whether it's commercial or residential.
I will, yeah, I, I can, I can look into see if we would be able to put something like that into the website, um, and have it legible and understandable, cause yeah, M L S can get a little funky, but yeah, we, I will look into that.
Have you heard anything from the company that, uh, purchased the Rosebud Plaza?
Um, I had a meeting with one of the owners, this was months ago now. They were not looking at doing any changes to the facilities, and I guess the one, it's a funky plaza because there's the lumber, or I guess the hardware stores in the county. So it, he, the, the impression I received was that they were, operations were going to continue, that there was no foreseeable changes on the horizon.
Would, would they like some good police protection, fire protection and come in and sell?
Well, especially the conversation I had, this was when lumber prices were ridiculous, so it's like, perfect, we could begin the B and O revenue, but nope. But it is what it is, um, we, we, we can tr- uh, I'll put that on the conversation piece.
Yeah, just put it out there to them that we have a great part for them and a great place for them and so forth, so they'd be happy to have them in the city. All of the ones with, oh yeah, check first, yeah. I'm talking about the old, I'm talking about the old plaza.
No, one side's in, one side's out.
One side's in, but the other's out, right?
I have a question, is, uh, the old folks way, the garage, the cyber, are they in the city or out of the city?
Out, they're out.
That's what I'm asking you, yeah. So is that part of your personal property, you see that deal there?
Yeah.
What, the old, the old cop, the colored building?
The old funeral hall?
Do you see our latest funeral hall?
Yeah.
I just had one follow up question on the, the Kroger site on West Pike. Those tenants that you're talking about, are those commercial tenants?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's all I had.
Yeah, uh, well, that's all good stuff, so everybody will, will be happy, I hope they're as happy with the Longhorn as they were with the, uh.
Longhorn, I'm very careful.
Old, old.
Few months ago, it's more spacious.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good one, so, but.
I keep, Red Lobster, people won't quit talking about it.
I, we'll do one, Red Lobster.
Red, Red Lobster is no longer with Darden Restaurants, so it is not the same company anymore.
Now, you did mention that East Point, I mean, kinda running out of room a little bit, I mean, I know the property, I think what Chris Lane owns on the other side of fifty, um, is there be any, I mean, I've heard, there's a, there's a picture, there's a website, I mean, has there been any other discussion about that? I know it's at Anmore, right, it's definitely in Anmore.
I don't think it's in.
It's down, down.
Yeah.
Oh, but I mean, since the comp plan's coming up, I mean, annexation is.
Is there any, no?
No, my, last I heard from Amy Wilson was regarding getting the, the golf project completed first before tackling that, but.
Is it?
Development's funny, so I don't know.
Are they working on the golf?
Yeah, they, so they're, they were looking at a commercial tenant for the entire first floor space, that's all I can really share with that.
I mean, now, if they were to develop that area, eh, or the county, they would have to need our services, right? I mean.
No, they, we, when I met with him, he was doing two phases, first phase is industrial, to get people up there, but the industrial, uh, people do not wanna be in the city. They're wanting to be in other towns. The second phase of that project is for the retail, the retail people do wanna be in the city.
Thanks for sharing, they want.
Yeah, so they wanna be, you know, in the city, but, uh, he, what comment he said, well, I'll go along to a fire station. I said, well, volunteer isn't, unfortunately, is, is that, we could provide, you know, we can build a station up there, house a little bit. Half million dollar housing truck for your industriums and things like that, um, but, you know, the sewage, you know, they have to treat sewage, sewage goes down to Anmore and it comes to our plant. As far as sewer upgrades, you know, if, if they build up there, the question is, can Anmore sewer system handle their sewage? You know, what we would have to do is just build a sewer, uh, build some lines going up, um.
And build the station?
Yeah.
And, and put it up there so we can take that sewage, um, but sanitary water, we don't have the money for that at this time, uh, but that's something that, that.
Chris says.
It might come down to fight, probably, you know, I would imagine five, ten years round.
Chris says it's a big hurdle with getting, getting aggressive, aggressive with state department, that's what's dragging, that's what's dragging along.
Is that, I'm sure it would be, uh, would he wanna come off of fifty or off seventy-nine, or about a fifty?
Wants to come off of fifty, come off of fifty.
I heard stories of it, I wanna wear it east point.
He wants to build a bridge, he wants to build a bridge across, it goes right into, right around Lowe's, so they can go from industrial park and retail right over to East Point.
Seems like a picture.
Yeah, that's pretty ambitious.
Yeah, I mean, I like.
I do too.
Ten or fifteen, I don't know if in twenty or thirty, I don't remember that.
Looking at interchange at, uh, at Star City, uh, at Greatville.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Customer interchange up there, now it's got, I mean, uh, that, yeah, what, I don't, I think it is, but yeah, what?
Bass project, yeah.
Which one of the two?
That was a massive tip, tip tip project though.
I mean, if we can't let, I mean, would, I hate to hear that B and O would be the reason why industry would not come in. At Walmart, what we did a ten year, we waived it ten years or something, we did, just to get Walmart to build that whole new, I mean, would we all not be kinda in favor of looking at something like that?
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, why, we shouldn't let B and O ever come a conversation, it's industry that big.
I think you did offer that to Chris, Chris.
But he said, but he said the industry said that they was not, they didn't like the B and O being inside the city.
Just the way that it is, first of all, that is.
So, is, is there any anticipated timeframe on this, John?
No, um, we've been having meetings with both Mr. Lane and then the prospective tenants, so it's, it's moving.
It's moving.
Yeah, and they, I mean, they were doing work on the structure earlier this year, so.
Well, good, well, thank you, John, that was, that was pretty good stuff.
Good work.
Uh, guys, any more, uh, questions or comments or something? Something's ready, yeah.
I want Asian food now because we're talking about that, so I think that's what I'm going for.
Okay, been during the meeting, man.
Good work, John, that's good stuff.
Great work, man, yeah, that's awesome.